Will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any adjustments. We do have approval of minutes, a lot of them. Wednesday, January 25th, the insurance workshop at 3:00 and the budget workshop at 4:30. Monday, February 6th, the workshop at 4:00, regular meeting at 6:00, executive session at 7:30. And Monday, February 13th, the workshop at 4:00 PM, the executive session at 5:30. And Wednesday, February 15th, the executive session at 4:15. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
Recommendation to approve minutes as presented?
I'll second that.
Seconded. Thank you very much. All in favor? Okay. No public comments, no communications or committee reports. Superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the students. How was school vacation and any other updates that you want to share?
My school vacation was pretty good, but the update that I wanted to say was on Thursday and Friday this week, we're gonna, at the high school, we're gonna start picking our classes for next year. Seniors won't be doing that, but I think everybody is kind of excited. And I know that a couple of people in my grade are excited to have a not as heavy of a workload next year.
So this Wednesday, March 1st, the civil rights team is hosting the Special Olympics, Spread the Word Inclusion Day, which began in 2009. The purpose of this event is to ensure that everyone feels included within the school. And students are being asked to pledge during their lunches on Wednesday. And then also, the girls' basketball team, their season came to an end on Wednesday, February 22nd. They played Gorham in the semifinals, and then it was a very close game and it went into overtime, but Gorham ended up taking the win of 40 to 37. So yeah. Oh, and my school vacation was good.
My school vacation was very fun and exciting, so we returned last night at 1:00 AM from Italy. Mrs. Foley brought 72 of us to Italy. It was a very exciting trip and well worth it. We visited many different places. Main cities were Venice, Florence, and Rome. Got to see places like the Vatican, the Tribi Fountain, and also go on a gondola ride in Venice and all that stuff. Travel was a little bit long, but it was very fun and well worth it. And I think the class of 2024 has a lot to look forward to for Greece. And I can't thank Ms. Foley enough for all that she did to organize this trip, as well as the chaperones for all that they did. So, yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Moving on, we do have a couple, some field trips. I do want to, upcoming field trips to announce later this month. I'm happy to announce that our Key Club will be back going to their district conference. That always happens in Springfield, Massachusetts, so that's returning this year. I know I talked to Mr. Landry at the Board of Directors Chamber Commerce Meeting. Very excited and looking forward to that. So that's gonna take place March 31st, April 1st, and April 2nd, where they'll be taking approximately 30 Sanford High School students to that. Also, we have our digital design program at SRTC. Juniors and seniors there are gonna be going to the New England Institute of Technology as they will be going there on this Wednesday, coming right up, March 1st. So that's a great opportunity for them, that they will be heading there. And then they also have, yep, and then also, SRTC also. The Skills, the State Skills USA Leadership Conference is coming up. That's for juniors and seniors, and that's gonna be going up on March 16th and coming back on March 17th. That'll be probably approximately 45 to 50 SRTC students going up to Bangor. And they'll be part of the Bangor's UTC facility, as well as Eastern Maine Community College for that. So that's also exciting to look forward to. And then our building trades program at SRTC, they are also gonna be going to Providence, Rhode Island. They'll be going there March 24th, as they're going down to an industry trade show with training seminars with that. So that sounds like also an exciting opportunity. So those are the field trips that are coming up. I will be presenting, talking about our latest Sanford Spotlight. I'll be transferring this duty to our student representatives at future meetings, but I'll handle this one. A big thank you to Sam Bonzie, our communications coordinator, for putting this together. Emma talked about the successful season our girls' basketball program had and the tough loss that they had. Our varsity cheerleaders placed fourth at the state championship competition that was held back in Augusta and February 11th, and that ties for their highest-played finish in their team history, going all the way back to 1988 in doing that. Also, kudos to James Blood for his state championship win in the 113-pound division of the Class A wrestling tournament that was held right at Sanford High School back on Saturday, February 18th. Good luck to James as he goes on to New England's. Also, SRTC, we had as part of the business program, volunteers from Kenny Buck Savings Program, visited the Academy of Business before, prior to the school vacation. And they were talking about money concepts for teens and young adults, as well as understanding your credit report and score, some important life skills there with that. So kudos to the, that program and the volunteers from Kenny Buck Savings coming in to help there. At Sanford Middle School, they participated recently in their Great Kindness Challenge. And one of big kudos to all of the students who participated there. They also held their student recognition lunches on Tuesday, February 14th. The middle school PTA celebrated students for their participation in sports and clubs. And they also recognized their latest Be the Change Award winners and those who made honor roll. So a lot of recognition going on at Sanford Middle School. At Carl J. Lamb, students in Mrs. Cousins and Mr. Gauthier's students learned about African culture. And they can be seen where they worked on patterns commonly found in the African textiles. And they also enjoyed some African cuisine. And a big thank you to Jess Garnot for helping that unit celebrate diversity, acceptance, and kindness. And there's a picture of Devlin Rodriguez, and that's Mrs. Walker's kindergarten student. He was chosen to have his masterpiece displayed right here in our central office for the school department for that. So congratulations to Devlin. At Margaret Chaysmith School, they are getting ready for their upcoming Spring Sing. That's gonna happen this Wednesday, where we're gonna have all of our singing groups, elementary, middle, and high school, in the Performing Arts Center. So you'll see seven choruses there, including the 4th grade elementary chorus for that. So looking forward to that. Sanford Pride Elementary, if you remember, at our last school committee meeting on February 6th, we had their student leaders come, and they recognized us as January was National School Board Appreciation Month in doing that, so a big thank you for doing that. And then also, on February 9th, Sanford Pride, and our other elementary schools also did this. They celebrated the 100th Day of School for students in grades 1 through 4. And what they planned for that day is they asked students and staff to dress as though they were 100 years old. And we had some outstanding costumes that day. There's a picture of a few right there, happening at Sanford Pride. Want to announce that Sanford Community Adult Education is offering sessions to become a volunteer driver. And so if you've got extra time and a good reliable vehicle and desire to help your community, there's informational sessions going on to do that. So in this spotlight, you can click there for more information. Also, want to give a shout out to Mr. LaBerge, Ms. Frank Gore, Mr. Ford, Mr. Rowe, and Mrs. Murphy Putnam and Mrs. Laterno. They all participated in a lip sync battle going head-to-head back on February 14th. This was something that the Sanford High School peer helpers held. It was Valentine themed that day, and so kudos to Mr. Rowe for pulling that off, as he was the victor. And you can read all about that in the latest edition of the Sanford High School online newspaper, The Sanford Spartans. Also, we've got a few announcements. Steve, we still got the pre-K lottery is live and well. Registration for that school year is now open. I know we've had a lot of interest. So if you are interested in doing that, you're gonna want to be able to get that done and entered. The deadline will be at the end of March. Also, the latest Sanford Spotlight has an employee spotlight, and that's Mr. Do-It-All for our elementary technology, Dennis Wilson. So you can learn more about Dennis there in the employee spotlight. Congratulations to Bruce McKinnon. He's a former Sanford High School basketball coach and principal for his being selected to be inducted into the Maine Basketball Hall of Fame. That'll take place later this summer. We also featured Jonathan Mapes and John Rue as they were leaving our school committee. And then as they leave, welcoming Melissa and Kelly. So you can learn more about those comings and goings as part of the Sanford Spotlight for that. So that's the latest spotlight. Look forward to having our next one as we can highlight and feature all the other cool things that are happening throughout the district.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any directors' reports. Next is new business.
Sure. So I'd like to go through and bring up, one of the things we have to do this evening is we have to approve the 2023-2024 school department budget. We have to do that to bring to the city council for our city council budget workshops. They will begin a week from tomorrow. That will be Tuesday, March 7th. And so we've been meeting frequently as a school committee, as part of the, to develop our school budget. We've had school committee budget workshops. Those have been recorded for people to go back and watch. We've also got information on our website. But before we do approve a budget amount this evening, I did want to give an overview of kind of like our budget process. We start our budget process in the fall, as we meet with all of our administrators, principals, and directors, responsible for submitting their budgets. Those budgets are submitted in November. Our business administrator, Cheryl Fornier, will look through all of those budgets. She'll meet with each principal and director to go through those preliminary, to make sure everything is okay. She does that through the month of December. And then Cheryl and Assistant Superintendent Steve Bucier and I meet with all of our directors and principals, and we go through their budgets line by line. And then the school committee gets involved in the process. This year, we had a Saturday morning meeting on Saturday, January 21st. And so the budget that we presented on that day had an increase of $3,600,408, or a 6.1% increase. That was our starting point on January 21st. To put that into some context, for us as a school department, we are primarily people when it comes to a budget. We have, most of our budget is salary and benefits. And so for us, just to turn the page, just to have the existing budget that we had this year, we had an overall increase of 4.9%, just under $3 million. And salary and benefits are a big part of that, and they went up 3.8% or over $2.2 million. So I think that gives some people a starting point. When we started on the 21st, we had some new positions that we were adding into this budget. As we know, we've got a successful pre-K expansion that's been going on this year. And so we were able to do that with a grant last year to help us get that program going. We knew that to continue that, we'd have some of those costs would be moving over into the local budget. And so those are pre-K ed tech positions that are gonna be coming over. We also have, we're bringing over another pre-K classroom to go to Carl J. Lamb School from Head Start, York County Community Action Corporation, as we bring them over to the local budget. We also requested a high school, an additional high school ed tech, a Sanford Middle School Special Education Assistant Director stipend, an additional special education social worker at the high school, SRTC Special Projects Manager, and then three new athletic positions at the middle school, adding 7th and 8th grade boys and girls lacrosse and 7th and 8th grade volleyball. So at our school budget, school committee budget workshop on January 30th, we received our state subsidy. So we did a presentation there to go over our ED 279 on that, to look over our revenue. And so when we factored that in, our expense budget increase was $3.6 million, 6.1%. But then when you start looking at, okay, when that revenue comes in, what is it gonna be for an increase in taxation? And so that came to just under $4 million, and that increase in taxation was 25.5% on January 30th. So we got to work, and so on February 13th, we had a 25.6% increase in taxation. We made some recommended cuts at that time, and we also used some of our reserves that we've been able to build up as a result of COVID over the last couple of years. And we also put some of our carryover towards that, and that was able to bring that 25.6% down to 17.8% on February 13th. And then the school committee asked us to see if we could bring down that increase to taxation to 11%. And so we met earlier today, and we've approved additional adjustments to the budget. We're still gonna be able to use the carryover in reserves, but we also made additional cuts of just under $40,000. We also moved some of our positions to be used by capital reserves. And then we also made some more additional recommended cuts of just under $182,000. We used a little bit more carryover. We got our health insurance adjustment that came in. We had budgeted a 9% increase on the recommendation. That came in to 4.1%. So that was able to bring things down. And then we also, and we used, we also moved some positions from our local budget to ESER and moved some things back into Perkins, and that allowed us to bring the budget in at 11%. As I mentioned about health insurance, we started with that 9% increase. We were able to get that down to 4.3%. We were able to use reserves to bring that down to zero. And so that was a big help for our budget, to be able to do that. And then we did move some positions from our local budget back into ESER. Four of those were positions that are currently in ESER this year, an ELL teacher, and a, two special ed positions at Carl J. Lamb School, one in the resource room, one in, one in the resource room and another one in self-contained. And then we also had a middle school resource room teacher as well, and a high school special education social worker, and the special education assistant director stipend. Those have been moved into ESER. And then we did move the SRTC Special Projects Manager back from the local, back into the Perkins grant. And that allowed us to remove $540,000 from the local. And the new positions that do remain in the budget are the pre-K ed techs and that pre-K teacher coming over from Head Start. That's not the full cost of a teacher with salary and benefits, because we do have a contracted service with them, but there is some expense cost there that will be part of this local budget. The coaching positions at the middle school for 7th and 8th grade boys and girls lacrosse and 7th and 8th grade volleyball are in this budget. And we also have a school resource officer, a third resource officer that is gonna be in this budget that is a plan to be for the elementary. So those are the new positions that are in the local budget. And so if you see where our expenses are, we started on January 21st at 6.1%. But when you start going over those cuts and the position cuts and the health insurance savings and moving those positions to ESER, that gets us down to 4%. And then if you look at the taxation, where we started really at 25.6, that's what gets us down to the 11% goal that we had. And then if you look at a comparison in this fiscal year 2023 budget that we're currently in, we had an expense increase last year of $3.5 million, or 6.4%, which resulted in an increase in taxation of just under $1.5 million, or 10.6%. This year, we have a budget that has got the expense increase at 4%, at $2,458,000, and our taxation increase, as I mentioned, is at 11%, which is 1,000,000, over $1,709,000. When you look at some of those major changes from our current budget to the proposed budget, we do have, moving those pre-K expenses in is just under $200,000. We do have with some outside placement increases, $647,000. Having that third SRO move, when we move the current law enforcement position into our local budget and keep a third SRO, that's at $96,000. And then fuel and gas prices have also increased. That's an increase of almost $200,000. And then we had some custodian positions that were also covered by grants that are no longer moving in. So that gives us over 1.25 million right there. There's, we want to look at our EPS required local for this budget. The proposed budget, we're looking at $12,461,000 for this fiscal year 2024 budget. How does that compare last year? We required $11,338,700. The year before that, it was $10,906,000 for fiscal year 2022. You may be scratching your head about those numbers to say, what's going on there? Well, remember back in fiscal year 2022, that was where we had received COVID funds. And as they came in late into that budget process, we took all of that change in mill rate that we've got, and we applied that completely towards taxation, which was very helpful. It did create a little bit of a cliff for us the following year. And then you can see in fiscal year 2023, our valuation went up. And by that going up, that impacted our subsidy. We received less subsidy. And then for this year's budget, once again, the three-year average in valuation is going up again, above the state average. Anything over the state average is, be expected to be picked up by local. And that's something that impacted us in this year's budget by having less than $1 million in subsidy as a result of that. So then you can see what our total EPS is the last three years. And you can also see the state subsidy percentage of our budget. In 2022, it was 77%, and this current budget, 76.87. And then what we're proposing in the proposed budget is 75.28%. I do want to bring up, I think it's important, I'll do this real quick, as we put this up onto the screen, but these are the per pupil costs for all, on this screen, it also shows all the schools in Southern Maine. And it also, in both York and Cumberland County, and it also has a state average. And where it says local average, those are the schools in Southern Maine, in York and Cumberland County. And then you can see at the bottom, we've highlighted Sanford. I highlight that because you can see that with our valuation, we have high state subsidy, we're a high receiver of state subsidy, over 75% of that comes. But you can also see that the budget that we have before you is a bare bones budget, because everything there is, on our EPS formula, you see that our per pupil costs are significantly below the state average and significantly below the average of Southern Maine in all categories. Now, I take out of there, CTE's been removed, so you've removed SRTC from that, and any debt services removed, because those use different formulas. But when you compare those to how we make a leg up, you can see that right now, that our per pupil cost is less than everyone else's. So I point that out, because I know people look at any budget that we put forward is gonna be impactful. We're very mindful of any types of increase that we put forward. We are very appreciative of the support that we get for our edu, from the, our taxpayers and our citizens for education. But we also know that we be careful of that burden that we place on them. But I am knowing that this budget is pretty lean in terms of bare bones. And so that was quick. That was basically six months' worth of work there and some school committee budget workshops that we've done. As I mentioned, more information can be seen on our website, and we also have those meetings recorded. But what I'm gonna be asking the school committee to take action on tonight for a proposed budget to approve is in the amount of $61,716,917. And that will, does include adult education, and so that will be an increase of $2,458,362, or 4%. So that's what we'll be looking to take action on this evening.
Okay. Recommendation to approve 2023-2024 school department budget in the amount just mentioned, $61,716,917. For presentation, the city council?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Cheryl, January 2023 financials.
Good evening. So, January financials, if you look at the dashboard, which is page 3 of the packet, our expenses over, compared to budget, were actually $505,000 below budget for year-to-date. But our expenses are up by 1.3 million. Our revenue is above last year by $442,000. For federal grants, we've received $1.3 million in revenue and expenses of $1.2 million. So everything's looking good there. Enterprise fund, revenue of $1.3 million so far this year and expenses of $1.4 million. We're always running one month behind on revenue for school nutrition, so that's always a little bit behind. ESER, we've received $2.6 million in revenue and we have $1.8 million in expenses. That's mostly due to state finally approving all of our invoices, which is nice. Other major grants are at $0.3 million revenue and $0.3 million worth of expense. So then if we go on to Article 1, Article 1, we're below budget by about $20,000. Article 2, we're slightly over on budget year-to-date. Now, remember, we do a percentage of what was last year's, and some money was done through IDEA. IDEA at different intervals. And we're slightly above budget. We're watching this one closely because outside placements have increased. Article Three, which is Career and Technical, they're under budget by approximately $28,000. Article Four, which is Athletics, is below budget by $62,000. That actually finally swung the other way because that one had been slightly over budget the past couple of months. But they're finally catching up on all of their game officials because we pay it differently now. Staff and Support, which is curriculum, IT, all of library, all of that type of group, counselors, is under budget by $139,000 so far this year. And so that one's running really well. Central Office, System Administration, is $32,000 under budget. And School Administration is slightly over budget by $5,000, which is your principals, admin assistants. I think it's just a timing of supply purchases, I think, is this year because the supply chain is not as bad as it was last year. And I purchased quite a bit of paper ahead of schedule to try to get it under a much lower dollar amount. Transportation Room, we're under budget by $218,000. We're behind by one invoice. They forgot to send us one, so we're missing a month of expense in there. So we actually paid in February two amounts. So we'll be caught up on that. But we're still under budget even after we paid those. Facilities Management, we're under budget by $107,000. And if you look at it compared to last year, the biggest increase is the Willard Building because we had just under $450,000 worth of expenses of that. Debt Service, it says we're over budget, but it's just the timing and the way the percentages work on that because now the dollar amount is less, but your principal payments are made at the exact same time. And your last payment, which is in May, is actually an interest payment. So it kind of makes it skews it the way we do our percentages because we don't actually budget a per month. We actually do it based off the prior year percentage. So that's actually fine. It's just the way it falls for the percentage. Article 11 says we're over budget by $4,000, but that was because he bought all his supplies at the beginning of the school year and last year he bought them towards the end. So it's just the timing. So that is in general the majority of all the expenses. And then of course you have that nice long memo if you want to read into detail.
Okay. Thank you very much. Recommendation to approve the January 2023 financials as presented.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded. Any discussion? No? All in favor? All in favor. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the first reading for the 2023-2024 School Calendar for discussion purposes.
So Sarah, can you get the, there it is. Thank you. If you can zoom in on that. So one of the things that, one of the challenges that we have is approving a school calendar. And why I say challenges is because we, as the host school with Sanford Regional Technical Center, we have to work, all the eight sending schools have to work together to come up with a school calendar that can only have five dissimilar days. Okay? So this is something that the Department of Education very much pushes that you have to work to make sure that out of all the sending schools, you have five dissimilar days. So that's been a challenge that we've been working together with all of our sending schools. And so we've been able to come up with a draft. This year, when you look at that calendar and you see when, if you could move it up, Sarah, you'll see that Labor Day is on Monday, September 4th. For many years, we would have our first day of school would be after Labor Day. But especially about the last couple of years with Labor Day being later, we've moved that time up forward. Okay? And so what you have is with all the sending schools, you have different starting dates and when people want to be able to start school because you do have to pay attention to when the last day of school is going to be. In Sanford, we have 175 student days. Most of the sending schools have that amount. Some of the others have more than the 175 days. And so when you look at that, in this calendar, what we're proposing is, we are still proposing to have this, can you scroll back there? I'm not ready for you, Sarah. There you go. We're looking to have our first student day be Wednesday, August 30th. Okay? So we would have, the first student day would be Wednesday, August 30th. The second student day would be Thursday, August 31st. Everyone would have Friday off on September 1st. That would bookend with the Labor Day holiday. We've usually done that in the past, so you'll have that four-day weekend. The last few years with Labor Day being later, we've always started school on Monday as the first student day. This year, we're proposing with the sending schools to start it on the first student day on Wednesday, the 30th. That would mean our teacher in-service days would move to Monday, the 28th and Thursday, Tuesday, the 29th. Okay? And so we would continue to have our new teacher orientation the prior week on Thursday, the 24th. So with this schedule, we'd be looking at Monday and Tuesday being in-service days. You'd probably see a lot of our open houses take place in our schools that evening on Tuesday, the 29th. That would lead into two student days before we start on the long Labor Day holiday. So that's one of the big changes here. That allows us to really have two dissimilar days. Okay? So that's why you're seeing the start on the 30th because we have to coordinate our calendars with the other sending schools. September's pretty straightforward, though. After we get by the Labor Day holiday, we will continue to have our early release days on Wednesdays. Remember, we take those staff days, extra ones, and we cut them up. And so we add an hour on top of the hour early release that allows us to have two hours for our staff development and our professional development and what we need to accomplish on those Wednesdays. Those will continue. You'll see that the Friday prior to the Indigenous People Holiday Weekend in October, that's going to be a day off for students on Friday, October 6th. Okay? It's going to be an in-service day for our staff. That's one we choose because that lines up with the CTE statewide conference happens on that day. So all of our SRTC teachers are going to be at that conference. And so that's why we have an in-service day in October on that Friday before the holiday weekend. October will lead right through, will go into November. And as you go into November, you're going to see that the Veterans Day holiday will be on Friday, November 10th. We'll continue to have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the Friday after Thanksgiving off, booked in around Thanksgiving for the month of November. That's no change there. As you go into December, you'll see that the plan is to go right up through Friday, December 22nd. And then with Christmas being on Monday, the 25th, that will be the holiday break in December. That will lead right through Christmas week. And then New Year's Day is on Monday, the 1st. And so then we'll come to school on Tuesday, the 2nd. We'll have Monday, the 15th off for the Martin Luther King Holiday. Our February school vacation will be the week of February 19th. March will continue to be a long month. Then in April, we'll have the traditional April school vacation, will go the week of April 15th. As we move into the month of May, you're going to look at the Memorial Day Holiday on Monday, May 27th. And so right then, that would have a last day of school on Wednesday, June 5th. But we would also have to add on any snow days that we have. And traditionally, we are going to have some snow days. And so we typically will try to put five there. That would take us to the 12th. And then anything that would happen after the 12th, those would be some things, depending on how many snow days we have, we might have to consider having some remote days or something in that piece. But that's, that's a calendar you have. That's what we've landed on that allows us with our sending schools to really meet that five dissimilar day requirement. I think there's an additional dissimilar day, but a lot of that is around Voting Day for some of our sending schools. And traditionally, the Department of Education has not counted that as a dissimilar day. So that's what we have here. I'm not looking for action tonight. I'm just looking for any comments or any feedback because we still, I want to take this back and be able to work with it with our sending schools to make sure that I can bring back any feedback. We're asking all of the schools to do that. And then I've also trying to share that with our, also with the SFT for us. I think there is interest in continuing to start before Labor Day. People like the four-day weekend. That is going to be tough on our teachers to come in Monday and Tuesday with open house usually and then also lead into the first two days of school of Wednesday and Thursday. But I think it's important to have schools started to kind of, kind of work those things out before the long weekend so that we can come in and hit the ground running. So that's, that's the rationale behind the draft that's in front of you. Open if anybody has any questions or any comments or feedback on the proposed calendar.
Jen?
I do have some feedback. So I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, how many schools host early release? Is it an industry norm?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not. There are some that do it. There's some that would do it like we do. There's others that don't do it as frequently as do they, as we do it. They might do it monthly or they might do it biweekly.
Okay. And as far as starting before or after Labor Day, I really think that that's just kind of a personal preference. You know, some people like to start before Labor Day. Some people don't like to start before Labor Day. Looking at the calendar as it is now, you know, I'm just wondering how much do we drive the bus as the, you know, host school? And how much do we kind of like bend to the will of the other schools? Because, you know, I'm one that likes to start after Labor Day. You know, so looking at the calendar, I see taking those two days and moving them to June 6th and 7th as not being egregious, you know?
Yep. So good, 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 good feedback. What I would say is that there are some schools, sending schools, that they do not start school until after Labor Day. And that's something that is probably coming from their business community because they rely so much on student help and that is a big part of their business. And so, so you'll have some communities that will say, we're not going to start until after Labor Day. You have some other schools that have it into their contract. It's, it's written into the contract that they can't. We try to have people in those situations send their kids to SRTC even if they're not in session. But some of those will not send them, so we don't count them as dissimilar days. So the Wednesday start is kind of meeting in the middle because you have some people who do start earlier than that. Sometimes they have more than 175 days, student days, so they're able to do that. The other thing that has impacted us in recent years is the new Juneteenth holiday. So the Juneteenth holiday would be, depending on what you get for snow days, you could be in a situation where regardless of Juneteenth comes, you have to take that day off as a holiday. So that's why you're looking at a Wednesday start date for us is trying to meet in the middle that we are trying to help facilitate to make sure that we can have the no more than five dissimilar days and work within some of the parameters that people have.
Yeah, and I like that you mentioned the workforce because, you know, I think that we have families and students in our community who also are a part of that seasonal workforce. So I know starting school before Labor Day, you know, it can be cumbersome, especially if they have those elementary ed students and they are a part of a seasonal workforce down at the beach. So, you know, I would just be interested in possibly seeing if SAM, you know, not that we would dictate per se by survey, but I would be very interested to just kind of get our finger on the pulse for our community and get a survey out to families to see what their preference is, being specific with sharing how the calendar falls this year because I think you have a really valid point with Juneteenth. However, looking at the calendar for this year, I'm not really convinced that Juneteenth would be a problem unless we just got hammered with snow, which does happen. It does happen, you know? But just looking at it, I'm like, dang, that's a lot of snow days to get us all the way to Juneteenth.
But that's not, that also impacts the other seven sending schools. And that's where they're, that's where it factors in with them as well.
Juneteenth?
Yeah, they, they could, remember, what we do is we take our in-service days and cut them up. Other schools don't. So that extends their calendar beyond where their days would, where, where they would have the last day of school. And so that's when it gets close to Juneteenth. And I think that's where people are saying, and I think our families would say the same thing. They would say, what? The ugly, you're saying I can't go to school and you're going to say I have to come back in a couple of day or two? I think you would find that that would be challenging. Getting back to the workforce, that's why you can also see us trying to keep those long weekends together, the Friday and the Monday. It's kind of for two reasons. One, you got the workforce where you're saying, okay, you do have to give up two days of Wednesday and a Thursday for our students to come in and do that. And then there's also families who like to have, you know, that weekend for some of their family events as well. So that's where we try to be able to meet in the middle there a little bit rather than starting on a Monday and going four days where those people would not be able to work at least during the day for those four days. I think we can look out for a survey that will, but I also, there's a risk in that because you want to come back what people say, but we also have reasons for the reasons we're doing what we're doing as well for that. But I think it might be something we can put together to at least kind of get the interest because, you know, I know that we haven't had a lot of negative feedback about starting before Labor Day with that. I think as you look at it, people do enjoy the idea of trying to get out in earlier June. I know the times we started after Labor Day, we feel like we've gotten out later in June and that's where it's challenging as well. So it's, those are tough.
Give or take. Anybody else? No?
The only thing that I have is if the purple should just say day off because it's kind of hard to tell, like on the side over here. And then that Friday's not green. That's all I got. Green down here, I'm sorry, I see it.
Okay. All right. But it's not on there, the Friday before?
Friday, no, I see it. It's, because it looks like it's not green here. Yeah, that's not, it's not.
Anything else? Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on, no old business. And now we've got resignations, retirements, staff appointments, transfers, nominations.
Sure. So a couple resignations to announce. Barbara Dumont is an Ed Tech 3 at Sanford Middle School. Sam Geezy is a special education social worker at Carl J. Lamb. And Jessica Dilboi as an Ed Tech 1 special education ESAR at Carl J. Lamb. And then as far as staff appointments, Cindy Ketti, Ed Tech 3, Middle Elementary School for the Bridge. She will be, she started today as her first day. And then also we've got some appointments, the spring, the spring coaching positions. Some of those have already been handled individually if they've been new and they will also include in this. But Kyle Bernier, varsity baseball coach. JV baseball coach, no nomination at this time. Freshman baseball coach, Nate Mann. Varsity softball, Scott Shepherd. JV softball, no nomination at this time. Boys head track coach, Kevin Way. Boys assistant track coach- Boys assistant track coach, Magnus Lewis. Girls head track coach, Nate Smith. Assistant track coach for the girls in the lane. Nick Works for boys tennis. Haley Francore, girls tennis. Kelly Foley, girls lacrosse. Alicia Slaboda, girls JV lacrosse. Nate McClellan, boys lacrosse. Anthony Nugent, boys JV lacrosse. Dan Stefanello, 8th grade baseball. Mark Bosino, 7th grade baseball. Vicki Thomas, 8th grade softball. 7th grade softball, no nomination at this time. And then, for middle school track, Brock Sanborn and Diana Allen. I do know Zach Lumlin's working hard to fill those openings, and I think we have a couple that were ready. They just did not meet the deadline to get this out, so you'll be getting those at our next meeting. Want to announce a transfer of Lauren Williams. She's increasing her hours from a 5.25-hour-per-week position at MCS to a 6-point-hour position. And then, there is one nomination this evening that I'd like the school committee to take action on. I'm nominating Jason Dudley to be our Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Jason is a longtime employee for the Sanford School Department, is a graduate of the Sanford School Department. Jason worked as a head custodian for many years at the Old Willard School. More recently, he's been the assistant Director of Facilities and Maintenance. And more recently, he's been the interim director for that. So I am pleased to nominate Jason Dudley as the Director of Facilities and Maintenance.
Recommendation to nominate Jason Dudley as a Director of Facilities and Maintenance.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Welcome, Jason Dudley. Congratulations.
And I will be formally recognizing Jason early, early tomorrow morning, as he and I are going to be talking about the weather that comes in, the predicted weather. Jason and I become really good friends early, early in the morning. So I will make sure tomorrow, when I talk to Jason, I will be, first thing to do is to congratulate him on the formal action by the school committee this evening.
Okay. Policies and procedures are next.
Good evening. I have one policy tonight for a second reading, and that is Policy IKF, which is a graduation requirement policy that I presented you for a first reading earlier in February. Policy IKF, graduation requirements, is an existing policy that was last updated in 2021. The changes in front of you tonight are an outcome of the work that was done by the Scheduling Advisory Committee to move to a five-block schedule beginning in school year 2023, 2024. The graduation requirements were adjusted as follows. The first thing that was adjusted was credits. Students must successfully complete a total of 27 credits now and 25, so we increased our graduation requirement by two credits. Of these credits, 11 must be specified by the state of Maine, and then, the additional credits are the ones that we require here locally in Sanford. Specifically, in English Language Arts, we've increased by one credit to make it five credits. Mathematics, we've increased by one to make four credits. Social Studies and History, we've increased from three credits to four credits. Science, including one year of a laboratory study, we've increased by one credit from three to four. Fine Arts, which may include art or music, is in one credit. Health remains a half a credit. PE, Physical Education, including personal fitness, remains at one credit. And Personal Finance remains at one credit. During a student's senior year, they must be enrolled in Senior English and Senior Civics. This does still fit into, we had talked about the change to a five-block schedule was to provide more opportunity, more opportunity for students to take electives. And there will be electives that will fall under that ELA, Math, Social Studies, and Science category. So that is an explanation to that. The second part of the policy that was changed was computer proficiency. Computer proficiency was removed from the policy as computer skills are embedded in everything that we do, and computer skills are not formally assessed at Sanford High School at this time. There was something in there about delayed awarding of diplomas. Delayed awarding diplomas was removed from the policy. As post-secondary institutions, they allow students to take classes, but they don't formally accept you until you have that high school diploma. And so, that language has been removed. In addition to the changes above, minor language revisions were made that did not change the meaning to the policy. These new graduation requirements will go into effect in entirety for the incoming class of 2027. In the incoming sophomore class of 2026, students in the classes of 2025 and 2024 will follow previous graduation requirements. And I've included below what those requirements are, the current requirements. The only addition for our current sophomores and juniors will be that in their senior year, after today's date, they will be required to take Senior English. So that would prevent anybody moving forward from tonight being able to graduate early. And that is the recommendation for the graduation policy requirements. Any questions?
One of the things, Steve, and I think Principal Matt Peterman is joining us for that, is I know we spent a lot of time on our advisory committee for the schedule for Sanford High School. And so, we spent a lot of time studying that. And one of the things I want to be, and you mentioned it a little bit, Steve, but I want to be careful about was, I think we had a concern about just increasing the credits. But if we're going to be increasing them in the content areas, that kind of might have went away from what we were trying to do by increasing to the five-block schedule. And so, I know I've spoken to Mr. Peterman, and I've also spoken to Beth Laterno, the Director of School Counseling. So I don't know, Matt, is that something that you mind taking on addressing? Because I want to make sure as we do this, that it's not actually coming back and not achieving what we wanted to achieve with that. So Matt, if you're comfortable, do you mind responding to that?
Yep, absolutely. And thank you very much for having me. The additional classes that are in those departments are not specified, meaning we don't have a required class that they're having to take for it. So they'll be able to take electives in that department. So if they, you know, for the additional social studies credit, if they want to take sociology, they're allowed to do so. When you look at the required courses that are listed out there, and those are the required credits, they're not required courses, that number equals 20.5. That means, over the course of four years, a student will potentially have 40 opportunities for credits. So just over half of them, we specify what area they have to take. So the other 19 and 1/2 are all up to them as to what they want to take. So we think there's still a lot of flexibility in this. And I did speak with Mrs. Laterno today as well. And I mean, obviously, if it were, we're adding credits, but we're specifying exactly what class they have to take, I think that would make it more restrictive. In this case, I don't believe we're doing so.
Thanks, Matt.
Any questions?
My only question is, under the history, I noticed that the specification of like world history, all that stuff was crossed out. Is that part of the reason why? Or is it, under the history, only the change from three to four?
It should only be the change from three to four. And then, civics is obviously required. I think that gets us away from, we've changed our social studies requirements over the years. We used to have world history, now we have geography. We used to have two different parts of US history. Now, we've added civics. So it keeps that from, again, being specific in that regard. I think each department will have a progression that students can take, but we got rid of that language just because it made it a little more flexible for everybody.
What does that look like when you're transferring schools? Is the only question I have on that. If a school is requiring, I mean, maybe schools aren't requiring that anymore, but if a school, if a different school requires US history and we're not, you know?
And that's exactly why we removed the language, because we would have, we used to have kids that would transfer in, and because they didn't take world history as a freshman, we were putting them in as potentially a junior into a freshman class. So they would get the world history because they may have already taken a civics or a US history. So I think this just allows for some more flexibility. Most of the time when we have transfers like that, we're pretty flexible. If they specify courses out of order, you know, we make it work for the students.
It's more of a concern for students moving out, though, is what my thought was.
I think a lot of them are just, you know, most schools are the same as us. They look at our transcripts and they accept things for what they are. If they have a specific number of classes that are required, or specific courses that are required for Grade 9, they look at our Grade 9 and take those and accept those as their 9th-grade credits because there isn't anybody that wants to put a senior into a required class. So I think you see a lot of grace amongst the schools that, you know, we work with on a daily basis.
Yeah, that's the constant challenge. It's just not exact perfect system, so you're able to find that. So I think flexibility is an advantage in those situations. I do also want to point out that years ago, when we did go to a five-block schedule at the high school, we didn't adjust our credits requirements. And what you found there was, there was a big rush for people to graduate early. And so, you know, we did a study with all of our other schools in York County, and you're not, you've signed, it's very, very rare that you'll see people graduating before their senior year. And so, what we've done here is, as we've adjusted those credits, we've also put some requirements in for a senior year. And that doesn't mean that they might not be able to graduate after their first semester of their senior year, but this will prevent people graduating when they may not be ready. And by putting in the English class as well as the civics class, and then making personal finance into a junior or senior-level class, that also helps better prepare people for also being able to do that as well. And so, we're not going to have a rush of people coming in because, as we already, earlier in the meeting and prior to tonight's meeting, when we had a school committee budget workshop, you can also look at the impact that that has on funding and subsidy. So it's one of those things that we're trying to find out that is in the best interest of students, but also in the best interest of the district as well.
Anyone else have any comments or anything? Okay. Recommendation to accept Policy IKF as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Thank you. We have no future items. Calendar announcements.
Sure. So we'll be back here again next Monday for our Monday meeting, first meeting in March. That'll be 6 o'clock right here in the chambers. We met this evening because of the holiday last Monday. Our second meeting in March, school committee is scheduled for Monday, March 20th. As I mentioned earlier, by approving our budget this evening, it now goes on to the city councils. So those city council budget meetings are going to start a week from tomorrow on March 7th. Both the city and the school will present their budgets next Tuesday, March 7th, beginning at 4 o'clock. Then, on Tuesday, March 14th, that is the city council budget meeting where the school department will present their budget on that evening. The following Tuesday, on the 21st, there will be another city council budget meeting, which will be focused more on the city, but there'll also be a public hearing that evening on the city and school budgets at 6:00 PM as part of the city council meeting. And then, Tuesday, March 28th, and Tuesday, April 4th are also meetings there to get those budgets approved for the city council meeting on, formal approval on Tuesday, April 4th. So that's what we've got for some upcoming meetings.
Okay. Thanks so much. We've got nothing left, so I'm looking for a recommendation to adjourn at 7:06.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded. Thank you very much. All in favor? All in favor.